And good evening and welcome to the May 28th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you with us tonight in our audience and we're glad to have those that are watching at home. At this time, I'm going to ask you to stand as Vice Chairman David Settles will lead us in our pledge, followed then by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, a moment of silence. All right, board members, you have received a copy of the agenda. I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda printed, please.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Communications?
Good evening. I'm going to start by just letting you know that the City Schools Foundation is proud to welcome three new board members to the foundation board. They're Amy Hoover, Sean Hicklin, and David Scott. David has served on our board previously, has been off for over a year and can come back on by our bylaws. So, we're glad to have those three people joining our City Schools Foundation. Also, we would like to congratulate the following students who won our Earth Day poster contest: Catherine Parkinson, Sidney Jennings, and Cohen Jennings. They were from Discovery School. And Philip Mohab from Scales Elementary. We have lots of congratulations tonight, so we'd like to congratulate staff members that were selected as Foundation Fellows. Those are Kimberly Hicks from Scales Elementary, Ashley Herrod from Mitchell Nielsen, Emily Petty from Bradley Academy, and Trey Duke from Salem Elementary. The Foundation Fellows is a new program that the foundation began this year, so we are actually funding the, these four individuals to go to national or state conferences outside of what the district would have funded. So, they have a lot more leeway in what they're looking to attend. So, we're very happy to do that. We do expect the Foundation Fellows to come back and do report outs for their schools and/or district depending on what level of conference they went to. So, we're excited to have this happen and we look forward to continuing the Foundation Fellows. MCS has once again secured the student perfect attendance incentive with GoUSA Fun Park. Each month, a student gets perfect attendance. They get a free pass for a game of mini golf. This past school year, we had over 33,000 golf trips given to our students. So, congratulations to them. They can earn that every attendance period. Also, congratulations to the teachers who received the better, the business education partnership for their classrooms. Emily Petty from Bradley with Learning Math is Larger Than Life. Kelly Kleppinger from Discovery for Music is Not a Spectator Sport. Michelle Eaton from Irma Segal for Computerized Marbles. And Debbie Hickerson from John Pitter for Show What You Grow. So, we're proud to have those dollars coming in and they'll be using those come next year. Mitchell Nielsen would like to thank the following community partners: Jim Dillon and Zmeto Electric Wiring Systems for their donation to the Greenhouse Club. First Baptist Church on Castle for providing lunch for the entire faculty and staff for Teacher Appreciation Week, as well as Michael Davis with We Lead and the Nicholas Foundation for providing lunch as well. And Boy Scout Troop 711 for spending their service hours cleaning up the flower beds around Mitchell Nielsen. Last week, Murfreesboro City Schools students were selected for the sixth annual MTSU Winner's Circle. And as you may remember, the artwork that is out on display at City Hall goes to MTSU for the Winner's Circle. We compete with Cross Middle Tennessee with many, many other districts and schools. We actually, Murfreesboro City Schools swept the, the awards for our grade levels. So, K through 2nd, Amy Diaz from Irma Segal Elementary. She was a 2nd grader. 3rd through 5th, Leonardo Martinez from Hobgood. He was a 3rd grader. And then, Zaire Ponce from Reeves Rogers, who was a 6th grade. So, we are very, very proud of that and the fact that we had competed with other counties as well as private schools was, we're pretty excited about that. If you don't mind, I want to go ahead and call Scott Campbell to the podium so he can talk about the drone team. But as Scott's making his way up, I'm going to go ahead and show you just a real quick clip about the drone, so he has a little bit of time for his intro as well.
Well, today at Overall Creek, we're having our first drone racing championship. We had drone racers from every school around the district who got involved. We've had races during the year, and this is our championship one. So, what we're trying to do today is find out who's going to take home the championship trophy. We also have medals for the 1st, 2nd, and 3rd place teams. So, it's, it's really been exciting to watch this develop. Of course, this is the first year we've ever done it, so the kids are, are all new at it. So, we have some kids who are really, really, really good. We have other kids who are just learning how to do it. So, it's a big mix. We've invited some people from another school district who are the first certified drone pilots in the high schools, and they've come today to help us be judges.
We were invited to come on out and be judges and to just also fly our drones. I have students here that are certified drone pilots.
We came as basically a promoter of the UAS class at Owensville High and the upcoming classes presumably across the nation because we're one of the first. So, we thought it'd be a good thing to come and support the younger kids doing drone racing.
It's super cool. Yeah, this is like one of the first, he said, like in the district country maybe, you know, drone racing in elementary school levels for STEM programs and that, so it's, it's really awesome.
We are not aware of any other drone racing going on at the elementary school level anywhere. We've searched the internet and we couldn't find anything. And it's all about getting kids interested in not only drones, but encoding and how to work on things, how to use 3D printing to make some of the chassis next year. We're really looking to advance this into more and more of the STEM activities that Murfreesboro City Schools is really doing a good job with now.
I was, I'll be honest with you, I was a little reluctantly, a little scared at first when they asked me to do it. I had built drones in my classroom with my 4th graders and we talked about the implications, the negative and positive implications. And what I know is that this is so powerful for my students because there are jobs out there in the future that kids can make up to six figures flying drones for different companies and doing different things.
We're teaching the kids, this is not just about fun of racing, this is about what's in the future for them.
It's really exciting and to be one of the only elementary leagues in the country, I just think that that puts Murfreesboro City kind of on the map. I mean, for a lot of other reasons we're there, but this is like cutting edge and I'm just excited to be a part of that.
As the video said, this is the first year of our drone racing league. We introduced it at the start of last year as a chance to, for students to apply their learning in real world application. And I have several members of our team that helped me pull this off, along with the many, many coaches at each school. So, I have Doug Burks here, Ben Bowles, and Brian Cathcart, who are all here. And we also had Dustin Patrick, Jesse Owen, Ryan Womack that also helped. And Doug is going to bring the trophy.
Whoa.
Wow.
While he's bringing that, I want to thank City TV for making that video for us and providing coverage for us. So, if you, the trophy's still in the process. We're in the process of getting decals made for the front that will have the drone racing logo. And then, each year, we'll be putting the school's logo that won on the back. And then, we'll rotate it around the district to whoever wins. This year, it was won by Mitchell Nelson Schools, and several of their members are here. Robin, do you want to come introduce those?
Yes, I will turn it over to these folks, but Coach Bryce Reed coached the drone. He did the club this year. They met monthly as a drone club. And then, Rocco Adrian and Kai Green were part of the team. So, I'm going to step aside and let them share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having us up here. These two guys were a part of our first drone team, of course, and they did a wonderful job. It was a great experience. We're very thankful for you guys letting us have this drone team. I think overall, it was a success. They, they learned how to communicate with each other, learned some strategy, learned a lot about coding, about building the drones, about how the inner workings of it. We had some kinks to work out, but now I think we got a plan to go forward and luckily we got some of these guys back again for next year, so it'll be very fun. Step over here so they can see. Please don't drop it.
If you can't tell, that's an actual propeller blade from a real aircraft. And then, we had it painted gloss black.
We appreciate MTSU giving us that blade.
Awesome, guys.
Thank you very much.
That's the drone on the table.
Scott?
Yes, sir.
Is that one of the drones on the table?
Yes, sir.
And the controls?
Oh, dear. Please don't let Mr. Campbell have that.
I want you to fly it for me, Scott.
Did glasses? If we need it. You want me to fly this in here?
Sure, man.
Can we get liability waivers?
Can you fly that, David?
I most certainly cannot.
He sure looks calm.
Everyone I've ever tried to fly, oh, it's got to be charged. Scott, can one of the...
They're getting the battery to do it.
Okay.
Oh, my goodness.
They knew what to do.
I can probably take it off. This is the landing part that's always hard.
Okay. It's the landing part that's problem. It's just like a plane.
All right, Lisa, go ahead with your other communication until they get back, but I want to...
Right, and we will come back to them and their drone flying, which is quite impressive. So, I want to go ahead...
The principals tried it one day, too. That was quite impressive. The principals.
It was one of those things that you all forget.
Yeah. So, I want to go ahead and turn it over to Discovery School to show their new program that they're looking for, but I, I need John to come back out and Scott did something to my screen. I'm going to blame it on, on our IT folks here, so I can find what you need.
That's not a good idea.
I know, I know.
While we're at it, we appreciate Channel 3 and all they do. They, they come out and tape for us on weekends and at other times. So, thank you, John, and thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Channel 3.
Okay. It's your turn now. I'll get you pulled up here so we can see what's going on.
Angela Booney is part of a team that actually came to us, I guess, a few months ago and talked about kind of what they wanted to do. So, she's here tonight.
Yes. Yeah, so I am part of a team that's been at Discovery. We're really just running this vision idea out of just, we've got a passion and a vision for it. So, it's not a requirement, it's just something that we feel like we really needed at our school. So, we're hoping you can help us with that. It's really been since past October that we've looked at just a vision for this lot you can see next to the school and just seeing and envisioning that can be something more. So, we're looking for right now a track to go in our lot that's to the left of our school by the PE building. It would be a 400-meter track. I've gotten caught up to date on a lot of things like ADA and, you know, the material like needs to be asphalt, the grading slopes, everything. So, I can answer any of those questions. We've recently met with Mike Hughes to look over the actual next steps for getting it engineered and developed. But our real, just quick reasons why we're really wanting a track for our school, a few. One is we are the only school in the district that has a cross-country team, and currently they're just kind of running around in the grass with the holes and it's just, it's not very accurate, of course, as you can imagine. So, having a 400-meter would make, would be a really big deal. It would also give us opportunity to host things too as well, which I think would be something really unique for our school. Also, just for the community, we've worked with people like Angela Jackson through Parks and Rec who's talked and looked at the neighborhood around. There's really not much for them. So, this would be something that for the community, I think, would be really nice. Aesthetically speaking, our building is very old. That's something that we really have to kind of work around and having this lot area used and having multi-purpose use is something that you can pull up and, and see and it's aesthetically, it's very nice. Nutrition and health, of course, is something that's very important for Murfreesboro City Schools, especially our school. And again, this could be something very easily, students can get brain breaks. Being a 400-meter track, it could be a very quick run around. Also, was talking to Gary Anderson about some things like Williamson County was doing, where we can maybe have a collaboration with them, where we can maybe have competitions on who can get more miles in for walking, which I thought was great. And then, our other one is, we recently, our district, Overall Creek got it, and then Discovery School recently was able to, with a lot of hard work, get the TSIN STEM accreditation. And I'm not going to go into the details beyond just the track, but this track is part of a vision of having a STEAM focus. So, even with the track alone, every 400 meters, we're planning on having some STEAM activities that would go with it. So, that's another reason that we're really hoping that we can get this track kind of in motion and in the future being built. So, I don't know what questions you may have in particular, but that's just our overview on that track.
And this is just really, we wanted to, to keep you informed of what's going on there. But, but it is, they do have a really good plan and even have already sought some funding and acquired some funding for it. So, so I think it'll be unique for this particular school and really something they can do.
Yeah, the, the funding is probably a big one, right? So, that we've even taken on. We're, we're, at this point, we're just asking for the yes, and we are going to be the ones looking for the money. We have, I don't want to drop names, but we do have some, I think, that are going to be able to be our yes people for the, the money monetary purposes, but we're working on that, too.
Ms. Barton?
Yeah, I just had one question. The, the side that's closest to the street, I'm sure it's further away from that street. How, about how far away is it from the street?
Okay, so, we're working with Dr. Gilbert on that, too, as well. We will be putting in fencing, so.
So, there you go.
Yes.
That's on the Kirkwood side?
It would be an L shape, so it would be on the main road and then Kirkwood.
What is it?
It would be, it would match the back of the building, so it would be like, I think, the aluminum, if I'm saying correctly, plated. So, it wouldn't be like six feet tall, so it's not going to take away aesthetically from the building.
What, what is the price?
Pricing, okay. So, we're, Mike Hughes right now is one that's, I've recently kind of met with. I know the price is maybe a little bit on the higher range, but I can't really give you an exact number at this point. I know that the fencing is probably about, fencing, I think, is going to be about $7,000. The track's going to be at least $10,000, I would imagine. But again, we think we have some donors that are in place for it.
What, what is the track surface?
Asphalt is, and, and also working with people like Gary Anderson and Dr. Gilbert, we've talked about durability and for long-term, what would be able to, we'd be able to maintain for a long time. So, asphalt is, is what we determined on that one.
So, you're, you're taking donations then from businesses and individual, anybody that wants to give to it, right?
Absolutely, absolutely, for sure. Yes, anyone watching, you can contact me.
You're looking at, you're thinking $17,000, $18,000?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. And, and others, too. There's more, you're on just this track right now, but yeah, this is, this right now is our most important step.
Now, will, will that fence, it won't go all the way around the track, it'll just be on the roadside?
It's going to be the road, so it's, it's a safety. Yeah, and I mean, even without the track, that's, that's something I think that's important for our school. Just, we, you know, sadly, there's runners. I think most buildings have that, and it's just going to be another safety measure.
So, the fence is going to go the diagram that we're looking at?
Yes, so it, it's really going to be from grass all the way over to Kirkwood. Kirkwood all the way up to about where, Kirkwood to about where the track ends, I would imagine.
Other questions, comments?
I just have a comment. I lived across the street from Hobgood for nine years and there's a track there and it was a great resource for our neighborhood.
Yeah, absolutely.
Lots of people used it.
I agree.
So, we just want to, we'll keep you informed as this progresses, there'll be more than just the track, but we wanted to let you know tonight that they're starting that process.
Mr. Ballard?
So, during the budget process, Mr. Anderson, did we consider, did you submit for a capital project in the, this year's budget, or is there anything in there? Are we strictly going by volunteer donations?
When we were talking with them, they were talking about getting volunteers and supporters to help fund this, so we did not put it in the budget.
Okay. Well, that's not a good start, is it?
Well, it's hard to do for one, that you can't do for...
Everybody.
Everybody.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, let's watch.
I was going to say, they can't get him.
Can I get him on camera? There he goes.
Oh, my goodness. I've never been able to follow on one of those things. Everyone I've ever bought, I crashed.
Man, that's great. Okay, can you do some tricks?
That's a pretty good trick right there.
Yeah, but these kids, I bet they've got all kinds of stuff.
That's some good skill. Wow.
It was pretty bad.
David, you jumped back like...
Yeah, I keep, I think it's going to hit my hair.
It really is.
That's fascinating. It's mesmerizing.
Twenty years ago, you would have gotten a UFO sighting.
Oh, wow.
That is so much harder to do than it looks. I mean, I, I've yet to make it not bounce off the floor, so.
I'm, I should...
Now, he's just showing out.
I knew there was a trick.
That's just showing out now. So, congratulations to Mitchell Nelson and all the other drone teams. They did a tremendous job.
Mr. Settles has got another question for the panel.
Now that I've seen it in flight and everything, first of all, I would like to have one or two. It kind of beats, when I was a kid, we had big Star Wars mobiles or, or models, and we used to string them with fishing wire, you know, in your room. We thought we were really, really, really cool with that, but this beats that. I just wanted to ask one of the guys that worked on it if they can give us just a, a quick explanation of how it's put together. Does it come in a kit? I don't know, how does it? We won't understand all the mechanics of it, but maybe how it gets, a little of how it gets put together.
So, Ben and, Ben got to emcee the whole thing.
Me and Brian are going to come up here. So, yeah, so the drones, they have basically a flight controller, which that's like, I guess, the brains of it, and then that's connected to a camera. So, they actually have the ability, if we wanted to, the Professional Drone Racing League, they actually have VR headsets, so they, they fly it in first person. So, they're seeing it as if you were inside like a plane or inside the drone driving it. So, that's, yeah, so you, the flight controller...
That's the camera.
Yeah, it takes the picture. For this season, we didn't use the VR headsets, we just focused on the drone, but then you also have your plastic chassis. And then, also, there are prop motors, and they all use the exact same type of motors so that we have fair races. And then, you just have the different props that are connected to the motors. And then, also, the flight controller that basically relays to the motors. And then, also, we use our, if you saw the controller going around, so the kids actually program the controller to talk to the specific drone, because there's different channels on them. And so, basically, that's the way that the drone functions once they've got it set up. And then, obviously, over the course of the year, we had to replace a bunch of different parts when they were wrecked. But I think next year, our game plan is to get a little bit larger drones and the actual flight controller, if I'm not mistaken, it is in like a different material, correct? So, it will be a sturdier material that holds all of the brains in. So, hopefully, that will help protect it a little bit more. But as you saw in the thing, in our actual race, they would fly it through the hoops. We would have what we called six heats. So, a heat is just like a single race. So, we would have six heats, and then after that, you would have an endurance race, and that was 10, you had 10 minutes, and you just tried to get as many laps as you could get in the 10 minutes.
And we took the middle gates.
Yeah, and for that one, we would take the middle gates that were the hoops that they had to fly through. So, then they were just making a square and they would have to do it as many ra, as many laps as they could get in 10 minutes. And Segal actually got 57, which was a lot for that. It was very impressive. I think my boss, Scott, him and another technician had teamed up and they got, I think, 54 in 10 minutes. So, he kind of like upped it to 57 during the championship race.
We're not done.
Yeah, we're coming back to that record.
The championship, they've had, they had three regular season endurance races, and then they had the qualifier endurance race, so that's, that was their fifth go.
Yeah, so, they were getting quite a bit of experience by that time. But yeah, it, we all felt like it went really well, and I think it was a good thing to get the kids involved in.
That's great.
So, we're excited to see where it goes. Like they had mentioned on there, we are pretty sure that we're the only one in the country that we have found at elementary level. And like they said, a lot of the people, you can make a lot of money out. And also, this is like, we're mimicking what the Drone Racing League does, and we actually know some people that race in that league professionally, and it's treated like any other professional sport now. So, if y'all are interested, it's actually on TV sometimes, they have the Drone Racing League where you can watch, and they race off of the VR headsets. So, hopefully, in the future, that'll be something that we get to move into.
I think Rocco's going to be practicing that over the summer. I think that's one of his goals, is to come back with that first-person view headset.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
All right, our last communication of the evening. Ms. Sandy Shealy did send me some results today. We began our summer food serving, our summer feeding program, and they served 424 for breakfast and 602 for lunch on our first day. So, and that always increases once people get used to our routes and everything, so we're really proud of that. And again, she has three buses running and then other stops as well, so that's last communications.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. Appreciate it. All right, consent items. Do we have a motion to approve the consent items as printed?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Action items.
Your first action items, you have approval of the board meetings for this next, next school year, and so you have those... Your first action item is you have approval of the board meetings for this next, next school year, and so you have those before you. They are on Tuesday and Thursday, excuse me, Tuesday, the second and fourth Tuesday, I think with very few exceptions, right? Okay.
Any questions? We have a motion to approve the meeting agenda as printed.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Moore, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Okay. Your next action item is Mr. Anderson.
Yes, good evening, board. We have for you our basic housekeeping, finance things that we have to do at the end of every year. Under state law, we have to have, the number in our budget cannot be exceeded without doing an amendment to make sure that the board approves that additional funding. So we have to vote on these separately unless Elizabeth says differently, but I think we have to vote on each one separate because they're money involving. The, the first four pages of it is the general purpose ones for fiscal year nineteen, and these are amendments to our existing budgets, and just asking for your approval so we can get these booked and make sure that we're following all the state rules and regs on finance.
So, I'll be honest, I'm not, still not quite sure how it fits into what, what we do. So the budget amendments are from this last year?
Yes, the year we're actually in right now.
Right.
And these are amendments to what, what was originally approved before we really knew, as you know, we prove things before we know everything.
Right.
And so that's what these are, and the first set is on the general purpose operating budget.
Thank you.
Mr. Ball?
Gary, just indulge us and tuck, walk us through that one, just so we know if we understand it to have any questions.
Okay, the first section is on regular instruction, and of that, we have, we had additional expenditures that you can see, and it comes out of our fund balance money. We've already included it in the fund balance, so it's not like you're approving us to get additional funds. We've already accounted for it in our fund balance. It's just saying that we exceeded these particular lines, but there's other lines that we didn't meet the maximum amount, so we don't show those on this report. This is really just a report to make sure that, that you've given authority for us to spend the money in those areas. But it doesn't account for anything. We've under, done under, like for example, utilities. We, we spent a lot less money on utilities. It doesn't show that in this report. It just shows the maximum allowed in each line item. It used to be approved by categorical, meaning it used to be all instruction, but now the rules require it's done line item by line item, and that's why you see so much here.
Ms. Moore?
So just to clarify, there's no new revenue being used here? It's just a shift of how we allocated it initially?
It, what it is, is there, there could be new revenue used, but it's already in our fund balance monies that we told you about. So it's not that we're, it's not that we're coming back and, hey, will you guys please approve us to get this much more money? That's not what we're asking. We're asking to use the money in our fund balance to cover these, these expenditures. And when we budget, we always budget utilization of the fund balance.
Ms. Barton?
Out of curiosity, under the evaluation and testing, under student support services, what, what happened that, that went up? Did they, what did they do? What did, how did it, you know what I mean? It was, it was eighty-eight, three fifty, and then it ended up being a hundred and fourteen?
There were a couple of things in there, NWA with gifted and also the case benchmark and what?
So it wasn't just, wasn't state testing necessarily, it was all?
No, it's, it's...
Okay.
And, and so, and you're gonna find that, and you'll find there are places in here, as Gary was saying, that, that some of this that you'll see on here is flow-through. For example, there's some spots in here that the safety grant is paying for, but we're having to show the expenditures here.
Yes, they only require show expenditures. They don't have a show the offsetting revenues that come in, and there's a lot of money tied up in the school, state school safety grant that's in this. So basically, we're looking for the general purpose, then the federal, then ESP, then nutrition, and then moving forward into fiscal year twenty, and then the school debt service that the city has asked us to approve. But the first one is just a general purpose one.
So do we have to vote on these separately?
Elizabeth?
I think if the, the chair has the discretion, but typically, when we vote on things as a group, it's things that don't require discussion, things that are on the consent agenda, so there's gonna be a discussion on each one of these, and I would say we probably have to vote on them individually. Unless Mr. Chairman decides otherwise.
Well, I, I'm good with, as we go through, I'm voting on them all together. It's okay with me, but I think we need to go through each section.
Okay, well, that, that's, you want me to go to the next section then?
That's fine.
Okay, the, the next section is on the federal IDEA expenditures. Wait, make sure I got the right one here. I may have picked the wrong one here. Extended school.
It's your extended school.
I got them in a different, different, okay, federal. Okay, the federal program, what this one is showing that we spent six hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars more, and that's because we had increase in revenues of six hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. So it's just a matter of balancing up how much more money we got and how we spent it. That's that one. The next one is the extended school program. Extended school program has, showing an increase of three hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars, and the reason for that one is because we had additional students, we had to hire additional personnel, we had additional programs, and we had more revenue to offset the additional expenditures in that one. The next one is nutrition budget. Nutrition budget is, is an interesting twist to that since it's a federal program. If we build up a fund balance of greater than three months, they require us to spend it. And therefore, you see, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars, we had to spend, and so we did. And you can see the majority of that's in equipment, but that is a requirement under the, under the federal guidelines that we spend the money. So we have the money in there to cover it, and that's just how we show it, that that's how the money is being spent in those areas. The next section is the federal and state projected revenues. And this is a two-pager, and it shows how the federal and state projected revenue expenditures will be, come in, and how they will be spent on those two pages. You've already seen that in your budget document. This puts it in the format that the city's requested that we put it in. We gave you the official document we submit to the state, and this is how the, the city wanted us to, to show it for their reporting.
The page that's broken out, you're talking about, the page that's broken out by category.
It's broken out by category on the, this, this page?
Yeah, that's the one you're talking about.
Oh, there, I'm on the wrong one then.
That's the form, that's the format the city wants, correct?
We already gave you the projection for, in previous year. This is, this is for next, next year, where we have to show it as a budget item. And that's how they wanted us to show it. The other one was an estimate, because we don't, the, this, the fiscal year for these start in October. Everything else starts in July, so it's kind of really out of sequence, and that's why they asked us to do it like this, so we have an approved budget amount. They know we're gonna have to come through and make adjustments later anyhow, and that, that's, everywhere's like that.
So this, the chart one that the city wanted, that's just reflecting what we have, we just approved?
Well, this is for, this is for, we may have made some adjustments as we found out the monies. I'm not sure. I didn't run a cross-reference on that. Beth, do you know? Beth Prater, lady who actually does all the work in my office.
Yes, we know.
Now we know.
Same, all right, same dollar amount. Thank you. Thank you, Beth.
But this is our projected for next year.
This is what we've received word so far, what they expect us to get. It still can change.
Mm-hmm.
Because it doesn't start until October.
Right.
All right, and the last piece is the one that's got some yellow highlights on it, and this is, this one really is for the city, its school debt service fund. It's not really part of what we have to include in our budget as much as what the city does, and so the city shows the notes, notes owed, how much it is on the schools, and so they ask us to approve this document, because we, we do contribute back to the city based on our, we have our energy efficiency programs that are still in this document. Other than that, it's really more of a city document that they use than what we use. And we've started to do this a couple, three years ago for the city, so it all, what they want is all the, all the numbers to match up on both budgets, and that's why they give it to us like this. So those are your, those are your budget amendments in our housekeeping for the end of the year, to make sure we're in compliance with all the state and federal regs.
I have a question about the, the next to the last one, where it breaks out the projected...
The federal?
Mm-hmm, the FY twenty, federal and state projected expenditures.
Okay.
The Title I, I'm looking at the salary, the salary line, whatever. My point is, or my question is, I, I know that, or I've heard that some of the interventionists, that were interventionists are now in the classroom. Were they the ones paid through Title I, or were they the ones paid?
Yes.
Okay, so what are we doing with that money that we were using for interventionists?
We had to have it to balance what, what the rest of the costs were. Because we took a cut from, we took a cut on Title I. I don't know, Beth, do you remember? That's Becky's, and I have it. I know in... Let me see if I can find it.
Were all the Title I interventionists put back into classrooms?
No, there was one school that could still afford it, and I can't, I don't remember. I can, I can get you that information. They still have, they still have, those were the schools that had the three. They had one that the GP paid for.
Flight Pitterd.
And the other two, yeah. Let me see if I can get. Beth, do you remember how much Title I? I, I can, I can get that for you. I'll, I'll have to find it. Yeah, I'll have to find it for you.
Sixty-five thousand dollars they lost in Title I.
And with the spiral, the way that it had to work, then we, we couldn't balance.
Any other questions, comments? Not that we have a motion to approve fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget amendments?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Reports and information.
Okay, the first one is your enrollment report. This is the last one for the year. We grew one hundred students for the year. We lost some from the previous month, but we lost less than we did last year at this time. Always at the end of the year, people are moving out of the district and going places, so they end up getting off of our rolls. That does not hurt our BEP number, because BEP is not calculated at all in the last month. So it's just showing that people moved a little early, you know, they left the last week of school or something like that, going somewhere else, because testing was done. Overall, ninety-six percent attendance, and our overall PTR for the year was twenty point zero one. Which is wonderful, really strong. So that, that's it on the, on the enrollments. Any questions on that?
Do you remember how many, how much we grew last year?
Yes, sir.
Just curiosity.
Last year, we grew a total of two hundred and fifty-eight students. What I found in tracking it, it's always a calm before the storm, before we open up a new school, then we get a spike when we open up a new school. Kind of one of those weird glitch things that I'm trying, trying to figure out, okay, why does it, why does that happen? And the schools that I've looked at, they've done that. The only one that didn't do it was Pitterd, because it was like two years after Scales was open.
Okay.
And that didn't have that little drop before, but we're still expecting a, a good increase for this next year. Okay, the next one on the budget, on where we are. Right now, we're at eighty-three point three percent of the year. Our net income is, is up ten million, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Our revenue side, we're up on property taxes, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars over last year at this time, and on sales taxes, we're up five hundred and sixty-nine thousand over last year at this time. So of, of course, we had increased and budgeted some changes in that, but that's very healthy economy for us to show those, those type of numbers on, on the revenue side, where, where we should be at this point of the year in our, in our expenditures and, and revenue, so we feel pretty good about where we are. If any have questions, we'd be glad to answer.
Any questions on the expenditures, revenues, or growth? All right. Okay, any other business coming for the board tonight?
I have a couple of follow-up questions about budget from last time, and not really last time, about the budget, things that you talked about. One of the things you talked about was, I think it was a hundred and fifty thousand that you had left, hopefully to spend on science, and you weren't sure where that was gonna go. Any ideas where that's gonna go at this point?
No, right now, we had looked, we had looked at the textbooks, and we're having to see, but, but those are digital textbooks, so we're having to look at it to see what we're gonna need as far as infrastructure with them.
And so that would kind of wait on whether or not we get...
Well, and it's, that's right.
Computers.
That's right.
And the other things that we've asked for.
Yeah.
Okay. The other one was the ELL. You talked about maybe getting someone...
That's right.
Part-time or half-time for ELL. Any progress with that?
I actually had offered that position to someone. They did not take it, so I'm looking at how we can restructure.
I heard about that, by the way.
So we're looking, I know. So I'm looking at how I can restructure central office, and I think I can do that.
Okay, so will, will it be anybody that's got any, I, I know ELL experience is hard, but at least solid instructional.
Here's, here's what I find with, with our ELL. We have some folks that are excellent as far as teaching. What I'm looking for is someone who can lead that group more in, more in, and, and guide them more in leadership and direction than I am necessarily having to have knowledge about the content, if that makes sense. Because I think within, I think we have some teachers that are probably as expert as anybody we'd find, but, but what we don't have is someone to, to help guide them, to lead them, to get what they need, to, to keep, make sure that they stay legal. Because that's, that's a challenge right now to find that.
But we've got, we've got teachers with gifted training in buildings too. I mean, you know, so we got, and we got gifted coordinators, which I think, that's great, but I don't think that's all that that person would want, we'd want person to do for ELL. I'm just...
Well, right now, what you have with gifted is you do have, there's, there's really teachers rather than, and they're working with teachers, and they're working with students. With the gifted, what I have heard that they are needing is someone to help them with, and it may be coaching, but I think with our particular, with our ELL teachers, it's gonna be more bringing them together, having them share, making sure the elevation and those technical things work, making sure that the testing is there than it is really the, the technical instruction itself. And that's what our test scores certainly showed last year. So we're looking at that. I, I had hoped there would be, I, I was hoping that we would be able to get, and that person even probably would not spend their whole time coaching just because the ELL teachers, there's more knowledge there than I would say there would be of how to address the gifted learner. I think with the ELL, it's making sure that the, making sure that the evaluations are done as far as the student testing, making sure that we're legal with that, making sure that we'll have the curriculum there as much as anything else. I think the strategies are there.
But there are teachers in every building, though, that have had the gifted training that our gifted coordinators have had, right?
Right, but they are dealing with those, they are dealing with those individual students in their classrooms, just as surely as the ELL teachers are dealing with their individual students.
Okay.
Rich?
According to my count, we're about T-minus sixty days from opening Salem, Salem Elementary, so how do we feel about that right now? Is everything moving along just as, as scheduled? Any surprises and anything the board needs to know about as we move into the final... Any surprises and anything the board needs to know about as we move into the final check-offs? I mean, we've got the facilities, we've got, you know, running of all of the operations of the facilities, and, you know, parking areas, and all of the, the furnishings as well, and everything up and running.
Gary?
Furnishings will be delivered July eighth, and it'll take them a few days to put them in all the classrooms, so we're feeling pretty good about that, if they're willing to accept then. The kitchen equipment's already installed, the construction is moving along fine. The biggest thing, they say, the only issue they can see is the grass and stuff are all around the school, and getting all of that stuff done, they should have all the driveways and parking lots done, it's just all the usual stuff around the outside. But they're, they're on schedule right now to finish on time. Once they get undercover, they're usually in pretty good shape.
Well, good, good, that'll be exciting. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments? Not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, have a second?
Second.
All in favor, good night.